The organization is the Louisiana School Boards Association. We are a federation of the 69 locally-elected school boards across the state of Louisiana. We've been around since 1938. Our mission is leadership service and support for local school boards, and it is the voice of public education in Louisiana. We are gathering for our 80th annual conference. Each year we come together as school board members and superintendents from around the state of Louisiana to receive professional development on hot topics and issues that are important to all school board members and to the overall success of our K-12 students in Louisiana. Two big issues that are no secret to anyone is, one, state funding for public education. As our legislature continues to debate and have dialogue on how to fix structural problems with our state budget, meanwhile, back in local school districts, state funding for public education has remained static. Teacher salaries are down in comparison to our sister states, and that is the fundamental concern for our gathering today, to advocate to protect K-12 funding and not let it get caught up in the budget problems that exist at the state.
Budgetary constraints. And when we howl this, if the unfunded mandates that the state sometimes put on us, and also the federal congress puts on us, and they expect us to jump through hoops without the funding to perform these tasks, so it's important that we have the proper funding to do these things.
Not having the 2 and 3/4% increase every year has cost us several million dollars, and that's in money from 10 years ago. If you compute all of the other rising costs into it, it's probably cost us $20 million just from where we're supposed to be.
What are some of the rising costs that school systems are facing around Louisiana?
A lot of people don't realize that it costs $5 a mile to run a school bus. When you compute the cost of tires and fuel and the pay that's required, and of course the insurance and everything else, five bucks a mile to run every school bus. And we, in a fairly rural area, have a lot of school buses on the road.
We actually, with not getting all the MFP money that we were supposed to be getting, it really, really straps the local school boards to be able to participate and do any new projects as far as for maintenance or as far as for teacher pay raise. Big, big cuts mean a whole lot to very small parishes like Acadia, where sometimes we want to do the right thing, but we're just strapped for cash that we really cannot do what we were trying to do.
Well, actually, for Tangerel Parish, this is my 12th here on the board, so I've been involved the whole time. The MFP being cut and frozen like that for years has cost us over $50 million in revenue as well as in cuts because of the higher rates of healthcare as well as retirement care. It costs us $50 million. So we've had to do a lot of budget cutting in our parish to compensate for the money that we've lost in our MFP.
Clearly, we've had to learn how to do more with less, right? And the cost of everything is going up, the cost of equipment, materials, everything, including, of course, teachers, administration, staff, all of those things. It costs more to live. So we've been very successful with doing more with less, but there is some point that you're saturated, and that really you have to begin to cut meaningful programs and meaningful items away from the school board budget.
A flat MFP being into us, that it's gonna stop us from doing some of the thing that we want to do. We cannot give our teachers a pay raise, and we got to take money from elsewhere in our budget. It does overall affect everything we do.
It's really limited the things that our teachers and students can accomplish. And as we keep raising the stakes and raising the measures for accountability, it's necessary for us to go back to the drawing board and look at what is the actual cost of educating a child in Louisiana and funding that MFP to the highest percent.
The MFP formula and the budget has not been increased in many years. And so, if you're not increasing it, you know, you're either moving forward or going backward. If you're not moving forward, you are going backward. So budget challenges in our district, East Baton Rouge Parish, is very difficult, very challenging. And so, we are looking to the governor to speak today to give us some ideas on what we can do moving forward. We have to be much more creative in our budgeting from now on. That's just the way it is.
Flat MFP for our school system in St. Helena Parish has been very troublesome. We have increasing expenses such as technology, textbooks, and employee benefits. All of those things, all of those costs are rising, but with a flat MFP, it creates a situation where we have to be really lean and basically get to the bare bones of things in order for us to provide services for our students.
Revenue is the backbone of all of our systems, and the funding we get, if you don't give us some increases along the way, because everything keeps going up, insurance, retirement. So it's hard to run a system when you don't have the money, and everything keeps going up, and then your cost on your retirements and insurance is always going up. So you've got to have a little increase along the way. We've been flat for a while now, so it really hurts.
The standstill in the MFP foundation has caused us to cut programs that are beneficial to our students, and if we could get that increase back, we could provide more services to our students and put back programs that's gonna help everybody be successful, all children.
I think it's a serious mistake on the part of our legislature to take money from already struggling public schools who haven't had a raise in almost 10 years and give it to an unproven, untested school, either by way of a voucher or by way of a charter. It's just costing taxpayers money, and they have no idea whether it's gonna be a good buy or not.
What are the fixed costs associated with a public school system compared to the fixed costs associated with a charter school?
The big difference between the two is teacher retirement. Right now, because of some things that happened in Baton Rouge over the years, we are spending 23 cents on retirement for every dollar we pay in salary. That should be about eight cents per dollar. And the big difference there is that charter schools have no retirement. The teachers go on their own and are expected, I guess, to set up their own 401K. They do not have the overhead that we have.
You have to start finding ways to cut, you know. You don't want to cut teachers. That's the backbone of your business. But, you know, you do it through nutrition whenever they retire, you're trying to shuffle around where you don't have to replace some of them, and that helps a lot. But still, you've got to find a way to cut, and if it's in different areas of stuff that you don't really need, then you've got to cut where you can, because funding is the backbone of the system. And you've got one source in there that pays all this, MFP, and if it don't increase and it keeps going down, you know, you've got to cut somewhere. And we don't ever want to cut the classroom.
The other hot topic that, again, is of major concern to all of our school districts and citizens in Louisiana is school safety, given the recent tragedy in the state of Florida.
Tell us, what would you like to see happen in the area of school safety?
Well, it's time for local school systems to assess and reassess their safety measures that are in place. Unfortunately, when an incident like this happens on a national level, it also serves as a prompt for all school boards, all superintendents, to sit down and reexamine their crisis management plans that should exist in coordination with local law enforcement, and look at ways in which they can improve whatever systems they have in place to ensure all of our students remain safe.
Right on everybody's mind right now is school safety. That's number one. It's difficult in schools because there's so many openings around the buildings to get in, but I will tell you, even right now, we're having some threats in East Baton Rouge Parish. There's copycaters out there. I want everybody to know, and I want our parents to know, that this is not going to be taken lightly. This will be treated very seriously. If students do this, they're going to be arrested and expelled from school. If they make any kind of threats, our student safety is top priority. That is probably the biggest issue right now.
Well, school safety is very important, and we take school safety very seriously in St. Helena. We just need to make sure that we have all of our systems in place in case of an emergency, a crisis plan. We do have that in place. We have a policy in place to address all of those issues, but it is very important that we keep our students safe and secure and make sure that they just get a quality environment for learning.
First of all, I'm one of those who believe that discipline begins at home, and not only that, we need to train our students to respect themselves and respect authority and especially respect the teachers. And when they come to school, they come to school to learn not to be disrupted.
I think we need to enforce the rules that we have, spend a lot of time and effort on drills and teaching teachers, in particular, how to react to incidents, and also improve the security of our schools themselves and the grounds to be able to maintain control over who gets to enter our schools and what they do while they're there.
Probably the most important thing is things that they're doing now, which is helping make schools more secure. But there has to be a balance in there. We do not want our schools to feel like prisons. Probably the most important thing is that we do something about automatic weapons. Now, a lot of my friends and my constituents are hunters and members of the NRA, but I'm surprised at how many of them agree that AR-15-style military weapons, there's no reason, no justification for them.
The way we design schools, number one, I think has to change. Open designs of schools in the past, I think, is gonna have to change. Parents pick a school, their number-one priority is safety, and then a great school education-wise. But safety is the number-one priority for parents, and so because of that, I think we have to start designing our schools a little bit differently. We have to make sure that we have the security in those schools with cameras. And I think personally, the most important thing we can do is secure a classroom door through, like, a bulletproof glass and a hardened lock. When you do that, then you can put those kids in a classroom and get them safe. I think that's the number-one priority for us moving forward.
We always advocate for increased funding for public education, and one of the areas that we'd like to see an increase in state funding, that is, as we just talked about, we need to make sure that there are additional dollars in state funding which would free up local dollars for local school systems to be able to enhance their safety systems, whether it be cameras or hiring resource officers, working on mental health issues with students that are at risk. If the state increases funding, then it allows for the local districts to redirect some of their local funding to address those safety issues and safety concerns.
Within a week, I get a phone call from another superintendent on the Mississippi, way up north. And it's a she, which, by the way, back in the '90s, we had 390 school districts and only three, I mean, I'm sorry, six women superintendents. So it was odd, period. But then she's calling me up. She says, "Mr. Volmer, we'd love you to come to our district." And I say, "Sure, I'll come and give a speech." She said, "We've all heard the speech. We want you to come and spend a day with us." She had three conditions. First, dressed down. You don't have to suit all up for this, just come on casual. It's gonna be like you worked in the district for a day. Second, I don't want you calling your secretary. I don't want your secretary calling you. It's gonna be as though you're one of our employees. And third, once you arrive, you cannot leave. I think, how hard can this be? I'm an expert, of course, because I went to school. So I show up on the appointed day, and the first thing she makes me do after she made me do bus duty at the elementary school, "Good morning, good morning, good morning." First thing she makes me do is be a teacher's aide in a third-grade classroom for the morning. What does that mean for a six-foot-tall man? They're eight years old. It means bending over, standing up, bending over, standing up, trying to give this little spaced-out boy at the window, "Come on in here, son. Why don't you join this big group?" Eight-year-olds, all morning long. The lunch bell rings, I'm still feeling pretty good. So I turn to the teacher and I say, "Come on, I'll buy you lunch downtown." Again, next week with the business group, that joke will go right over their heads. She looks at me and she said, "Thank you, but you know, we don't get out for lunch much around here. It's been arranged that you're gonna dine in the building today." Where'd they take me? I've been to the cafeteria dozens and dozens of times since then. Every time, it's a life-changing experience. But that's not where they took me. Where'd they take me? Ugh, teachers lounge. This is not a pretty sight. If you haven't been there, a bunch of grown-ups in some cluttered, often dingy room, using 15 to 20 minutes to inhale food, gossip, and cut out paper shamrocks, cut out paper pumpkins, cut out paper turkeys, not fine dining. I just dated myself with that shamrock reference. I just realized that. I have to inhale my food quickly because the superintendent's got me doing playground supervision during lunch, so I wolf down my food. I go out there, supervise the playground. The last lunch bell rings, the superintendent comes out into the yard to pick me up, cruel woman that she was. She makes me be a teacher's aide in the eighth-grade classroom for the afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen, the Louisiana School Boards, it's a warm Friday afternoon in May. I will go to my grave with that smell in my nostrils. The last bell rings. I am not usually an overtly religious man. It was everything I could do not to fall to my knees in prayer that I'd made it through the day. I hadn't stood on my feet for a whole day in decades, so the muscles behind my shin bones, they ached. The small of my back was killing me. My brain is screaming for Advil and caffeine, and I would not have turned down a beaker full of gin. We go down to her office to debrief, and I asked her what I thought was the most important question. Is what I just witnessed, is what I saw going on all around me all day, is that typical? And she said, and I took her at her word, for 90% of my staff, 90% of the time, "Do not let some big-shot local business leader or politician or your idiot brother-in-law make the case that this is easy. Forty hours a week for the people working inside your schools is nothing. Fifty hours, 60 hours is routine." Even as board members, I don't know whether you ever get a chance to step back and ask what the people of the state of Louisiana are asking you to do. Your educators are being asked to teach the most diverse, distracted, demanding generation of students the world has ever seen. Many of these kids are victims of a popular culture that has assaulted their physiology, fractured their attention span, and given them and their parents a dangerously overdeveloped sense of entitlement. This is unbelievably hard. You've got guys down in your small towns or your big cities this morning saying, "Oh, they just gotta teach these kids the basics. If they taught them the basics, everything would be okay." It's been decades since the people of this state have asked your schools to teach the basics. We start in 1910. We start adding lessons in basic hygiene, courses in nutrition. We start immunizing kids at school. We start screening for vision, hearing, and dental problems. From 1910 to 1940, we add vocational education, including industrial arts, Ag Ed, domestic science, sewing, cooking. Phys Ed's expanded, not that sports are important in Louisiana. School transportation is mandated. Think of that. For generations, kids had to get to school on their own. Now we gotta go fetch them. In the '40s, business education, typing, shorthand, music classes are expanded, half-day kindergartens are introduced, school lunch programs now. We gotta feed them. In the '50s, science and math are expanded, foreign language requirements are strengthened, driver's education's offered, something called sex education's introduced. Sometimes I wonder how we managed to make it as a species prior to sex education, but I guess we figured it out on our own. In the '60s, Head Start, bilingual education, advanced placement rooms, adult education, consumer education. In the '70s, special ed is mandated. There's a line item in your budget. Drug and alcohol abuse education, parenting education, women's studies, tag programs, alternative education, school breakfast now. We got to feed them twice. And for thousands upon thousands of children in Louisiana, this is the only decent food they get. In the '80s, I can't read all this, keyboarding, computer education, sexual abuse prevention education, stranger danger, anti-smoking, abstinence education, multicultural, non-sexist, blah, 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 blah. In the '90s, computer labs, internet instruction, TEP prep, school-to-work, distance learning, homeless education, CPR training, blah, 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 blah. In the 2000s, no child left behind, not that that was disruptive, internet safety, bullying, prevention programs, lessons in texting and social media etiquette, elevator and escalator safety instruction, body mass index evaluation, eating disorders, suicide awareness, race to the top, the Common Core, and STEM. And we have not added a single minute to the school calendar in eight decades. What does this list say? Teach my children? No. This list says, "Raise my kids." That's what this list says.
Today, we talked about the importance of supporting public schools all across the state of Louisiana. Our principal concern is building better relations between the people of Louisiana and their local schools. I guess the most worrisome statistic in my head is that less than 25% of the taxpayers of this state have children in school. Most folks are starting to have a "been there, done that" attitude. Hey, I paid for my kid. I mean, maybe I was willing to pay for my grandkids a little bit, but I don't know these kids, and there's a dirty little thread that runs through that, which is, they don't look like me. So we've got this very large group of taxpayers, of voters, who are drifting away from their traditional support of public education, and I'm here to talk about how we can fix that.
What's the best advice you have for Louisiana?
Louisiana's no different than any other state, except that it's different from every other state. The principal message is, the educators of the state, in almost every case, are doing a better job than they've ever done in the history of Louisiana, teaching more kids in more subjects to higher levels in more creative and dynamic ways than ever before. But the rate at which we see student success rising is nowhere near the rate at which we see societal demands rising, particularly in the workplace. So there's a gap between what kids are getting and what they need to know. And yet, almost every educator, 40 hours a week is nothing. 50 hours, 60 hours is routine. The problem is, they're being asked to teach the most diverse, demanding, distracted generation of kids the world has ever seen. Many of these students are victims of a pernicious, popular culture that fractures their attention span and gives them a dangerously overdeveloped sense of entitlement. That's what your educators face every day. My main message is, schools cannot do it alone, but in order to get public support, we're gonna have to do a better job of reaching out to the public.
Thank you. It is a difficult time, to say the least, in our country and in Louisiana to be an elected public servant. And when you think about it, the three things that most people are really, really passionate about, their children, their taxes, and their schools, you hit the trifecta. And as a result, you hear every time somebody's in your district and they're not happy. You don't hear from those who are happy. But what I know is, you have the obligation to make a decision on every issue in front of you, and there is no way to do that and please everybody. And so what you do is hard. And for that, I'm just gonna say thank you. Our children are better off because of your service. Our state is better off because of your service. And I am very mindful that every constituent of yours is a constituent of mine, and we can best serve our common constituents if we partner together, work together, and deliver the best possible education to our kids. And I know that's what you all are about, so I wanted to start by just thanking you for what you do. And I want to acknowledge your director, Scott Richard, who does a great job. I was on the Education Committee in the House of Representatives for eight years before I became governor, and I got well acquainted with Scott and Janet and many others. But you all couldn't have a better person at the helm of this association, and so, Scott, for your work, I want to thank you. And I'll also tell you that you've got a great governmental relations team. Markey and Danny, who are up here, do a wonderful job interacting with my office, but also with legislators. But I want to let you in on a little secret. The most effective voices that you have when it comes to influencing state policy is yours because you're out there in those individual districts of members, and when you speak to your representative, when you speak to your senator, when you speak to your governor, that is very significant. You have a lot more influence than you might think, because at the end of the day, I expect to hear from Scott. I expect to hear from Danny and from Markey. But when you come see me, when you go see your state representative or your senator, that is unexpected, and therefore, it has more influence. And so I'm just gonna encourage you today, whether you're a school board member or a superintendent, to make sure that you don't just rely upon your team, as good as they are. If something is important to you, speak out, grab them, and say, "Let me tell you what's really going on in my school and why that decision that you're about to make in Baton Rouge can either be really good for us or can be really bad for us." Don't trust that they're gonna get the information any other way, and you will have more influence than you can imagine. And the last thing I'm gonna say on that topic, try to establish a relationship with your representative, with your senator, before you ever ask him or her for anything. Just let them know who you are, and as a school board member, they should know you. But just let them know that you are gonna, from time to time, want to be able to visit with them. Call them, talk to them about things. And if it's possible, in that particular conversation, don't ask them for anything. Give them about 20 minutes, and go back and say, "Okay, now that we've got all that straight, let me tell you what's important to us." You don't need me to tell you that it has been a challenging period of time over the last number of years. I actually cannot remember how many times over the last 10 years, for example, that we even worked with you to handle inflation, that 2.75% inflationary increase that we try as a goal to make to the MFP. Scott, has it been, what, like, two and a half times or something like that?
Two.
Two?
Two and a half.
Two and a half. I know it was a half, because I've worked like heck one time to get you a half of an increase. I think it's two and a half times over the last 10 years. I'm sorry. We should do better than that. We should do better than that, because we say there is nothing more important to us than our children and their education. We say that education is synonymous with opportunity, and yet, we don't put our money where our mouth is. We should do better. We will do better. I stand before you very optimistic about the future of our state, but I'm also mindful of the challenges that we face, and those challenges are significant, and they have been since noon on January the 11th, 2016. But who's counting the days, right? No, but we are doing so many good things in our state, and we have so much momentum in terms of economic development, wins, investment, job creation, low unemployment, but it has to translate into more stability and predictability in our budgeting. It has to translate to more fairness in our tax structure. We have an opportunity to do that in Baton Rouge right now, a once-in-a-generational change where we can reset and then do better by you as we go forward, because we can actually create a tax structure that grows with the economy, and then we can do better. That's my goal. That's what I'm working so hard for and have been for a very long time. You know, I had over 30 meetings traveling the state this fall with local elected officials. Many of you came. Thank you for doing that. But I also met with businessmen and businesswomen all over the state, and the one thing they had in common is they said, "We know..." And the one thing they had in common is they said, we know that you've got a problem. We want you to fix it. And we know that fixing it will invariably mean you're going to do things that we don't necessarily like. But it's time to do it, because this cycle that we have, every two years having a crisis, is not working for us. It's not working for you. So we can do better. I am determined not to fail our children. And I need to be a better partner with you. The state of Louisiana needs to be a better partner with you, so together, we do right by our children. Because education really is synonymous with opportunity. And there is no way to achieve the number one mission we all have as human beings, and that's to leave our children and grandchildren in a better place than we have. If we don't work with the kids, or for the kids, who are in our education system, and you cannot do that in the state of Louisiana by not working with the school boards, the school systems that are educating the overwhelming majority of our kids. So unless we are better partners with you, we are not doing our jobs. We are going to be better for you. As soon as we get that stability, that predictability that we need, and I believe we're going to get it. But boy, is it hard. Man, does it take a long time. Does it require a lot of work? And I'm going to ask you to please, and you know I mean this, because this is the third time I've already asked you, reach out to your legislators and tell them you expect them to fix the problem. And that you may not agree with everything that they come up with to fix it. But guess what? If you insist on only doing those things you agree with, you are insisting that we never fix the problem. Because you can't get the requisite votes to pass anything unless we compromise. That's where we are as a state. So we have great things going, we have tremendous momentum on the one hand, and we've got this fiscal cliff on the other. And as soon as we solve the cliff, watch the prosperity we have in Louisiana. It will be unlike we have seen in decades. I already feel it is starting to happen. All we've got to do is do our work and get out of the way. And it's going to happen. You know what it's like to do your work. As challenged as you've been, you're making progress with our students. Since 2014, the ACT composite score has grown more than any southern state and ranks 10th among all states that test all of its students. You've done that despite the lack of support that you've gotten from the state of Louisiana. Since 2012, the number of students earning AP credit each year has increased by 137%. Thank you for supporting those students. And more students graduated in 2016 than ever before in the history of the state of Louisiana. You know, I told all of you, and I spent a lot of money to tell you, the last person I speak to every night is a teacher. And Donna frequently asks me, and she has since I got elected to the legislature, what did you do today for the schoolchildren of Louisiana? Any day I go to bed and I don't have a good answer for her, first of all, it's not pleasant. Secondly, I know that that day I didn't do as good as I should have. But I know that you in this room, you, because you are school board members and school superintendents, there is never a night, never, when you don't have something that you did to contribute. And so again, I thank you for that. And we are going to continue to work with you. I was just going over some of your legislative initiatives with Markey. We're going to have a meeting, and we're going to go through those. I can tell you, I've already taken a look. There's nothing you're asking for that I don't support. I don't think you're asking for enough, to be honest with you. But I'm going to stand with you. We're going to get those things done. I do want to tell you about a few initiatives that I have. One is No Kid Hungry Louisiana. This is a campaign, and why is it important? We have over 270,000 children in Louisiana who suffer from hunger. One in four of the children in our state remain in poverty. And the No Kid Hungry initiative that is actually led by my children's cabinet, and something that I and Donna are personally involved in, seeks to make sure every child, regardless of income, has a nutritious breakfast and lunch. And the first step was to initiate the School Breakfast Challenge, which encourages schools to make breakfast part of the typical day by serving in the classroom or through the grab and go style carts. And Warren Drake is here. Donna and I actually had an opportunity to go to one of his elementary schools and see that in action, and talk to the students, and it makes a tremendous difference for them. And some of this may be counterintuitive to what you think, and really what I thought as someone who went through a school that didn't do that. These kids grab that lunch, going through, getting off the school bus, or getting out of their car, off of a cart, and they go to their homeroom class. And while attendance is being taken, in those few minutes, they eat. You don't know which of those students might have come from having free or reduced meal, because they were all treated the same. They all got the same meal, and they all go in there and they sit down, and the teachers to a person told us it makes a difference as to whether that kid comes to school, whether that kid has a stomach ache or a headache, or whether they can pay attention. And it is so easy to do. So I'm imploring you all, if you haven't done it, please try. In the year 2018, the fact that we have so many kids going hungry and suffering from nutrition problems ought to embarrass us all. So let's do what we can do. We can't fix it all. But there are some things we can do. And what we can do, we must do. So I'm encouraging you to look at these initiatives, and many of you have, and I want to thank you. Actually, since we launched the program, 40,000 more students have access to healthy nutritious meals. The challenge was issued for the month of October. 300 in school, I'm sorry, 306 schools participated and yielded an increase of 147,000 students for that month. But let's not just do it for a month. Let's make sure that we're doing better. And eventually, we need to find a way to do things in the summer as well. Because you know, hunger is not just an issue during the school year. So I would encourage you to look at that. I want to also talk to you about Jobs for America's Graduates. We've made great strides in expanding the number of schools that have programs. Actually, we have now 123 programs for Jobs for America's Graduates. And every kid in the JAG program is an at-risk student. And so when I give you these figures, they're impressive, no matter what group of students you're talking about. But when you realize these are all at-risk students, hopefully you will see the value of the program. Graduation rate, 94%. Positive outcome rate, meaning employment, military service, or post-secondary education, 87%. In terms of full-time placement between school and work or combination, 91%. All at-risk students. So I'm encouraging you to support this program. If you don't have one, please contact us. We would love to help you get a program. Now, I talked to you already about the budget. I'm not going to go back to that, which is, this is where I'm supposed to talk about it in the speech. So I'm going to wrap it up here and wish you all a very successful convention. Thank you again for your leadership. Thank you for your service. And tell you that I intend, for the state of Louisiana and for me, to be a better partner with you, so that together, we can do a better job with our children, and ensuring that they and this state has a very bright future. And I know that we're going to be successful. I am more optimistic and bullish on the state of Louisiana than you can imagine. But only because I am 100% confident we're going to solve these challenges that are before us presently. God bless you. Thank you.
We would love to see a moratorium on changes to the accountability system, whether or not we can accomplish that task through legislation, but at least a three- to five-year period where there are no changes in the accountability system, just so our teachers can relieve themselves of the pressure and the students and parents in our state are not constantly wondering what the accountability system will look like. Senator Boudreau, you want to give us your thoughts, since you are a member of the Senate Education Committee?
Most definitely. I think one of the most important things is that the relationship between Bessie, the Department of Education, and our local boards has to improve. If we're going to get anywhere, we all have to be on the same playing field. And I could tell you, from my time in the Senate, that has not happened. It's a high priority that we do develop relationships, that we, they listen to you at the local levels and incorporate that. The scoring, and Senator Price hit it, what we're going to ask for is that the department come out with two sets of scores. And that's only fair to the parents, that they know that, to compare it. Danny and I had a conversation a couple weeks ago, and he gave this analogy. Scott said about the football game and the six points, if you scored touchdown in the first quarter, and it changes. He used the analogy of basketball, and he used Pistol Pete and Chris Jackson, who both played at LSU. And they both were outstanding scorers, outstanding shooters, but Chris had a three-point line. Pistol Pete didn't have the line. But in the record books, it says, this is the total number of points Pistol did in his career, and Chris, but there's not an asterisk that says, when he took a shot, he got three points instead of two points. It's the same thing we're talking about today, is that we're ever-changing, and the minute we catch up, it's time to change again. So we're going to ask them in the fall to send out two sets of scores, so that the parents can see that there was progress made. It's something that we can be transparent about, and that the accountability part of it will be met. So we've got some work to do as far as connecting the dots between our local boards and people who work every day in the system with the Bessie Board and the Department of Education. So from the Senate Education seat that I hold, that's going to be one of my biggest objectives in this coming regular session, is to move the needle so that we can get a better flavor of where we're going with this. And testing just to test, or score is just to score, and to keep changing, what have we accomplished? I'm all on board with a moratorium on, let's get our arms around this, and let's say, three years before we come up with any more changes. And we're running teachers out of the classroom, we're doing all these things, and in the public side, we're not doing a good job, and on paper, we know that's not true. So we'll continue to fight that with you all at the local level, to make sure that we're connected to the state, and that we don't just keep changing things just to change them.
Thank you, Senator Boudreau. Senator Gaddy, what are your thoughts on the ever-changing metrics of the accountability system?
I visited every school in my district in the first 24 months I got elected. I brought them all a US flag, a Pelican flag. I met with either classroom or in assembly. And you know, I think it's worse than, when I talked to every teacher I could talk to, and I thanked them. And in fact, we were in Dufferly, and my third-grade teacher from Apollo ran up behind me and gave me a hug, and I thought, oh my goodness, security, security. But it was just, she said, do you remember me? And I said, let me tell you, Ms. Capella, you taught us everything about hurricanes. And that's all we talk about in the state senate. When is the next flood? When is the next hurricane? But it's worse than playing football and them changing the score. I mean, what they do to y'all, really, with unfunded mandates, is they, when you couple unfunded mandates with the new accountability standards, you can't do either one of them. You don't have the money to do the unfunded mandates, and they give you a C. It'd be like if your old football coach said, hey, I think you can bench press more, but I'm not going to help you, I'm not going to buy any weights for you, and I want you to go from benching 200 to 350 in three months. Or you're off the team, and I'm going to give you an F. You know, that's the kind of stuff that needs to stop. My roommate, John Milkovich, it's funny how this roommate stuff works out at the Pentagon apartments, but John Milkovich filed a lawsuit to remove John White from office. Amen. And, you know, I said, John, you're going to kick a hornet's nest. And he said, well, you know, he said, Gaddy, have you ever seen a turtle on a fence post? And I said, yeah. He goes, well, you know, somebody put him there. And I think God put me here for a reason, to protect our teachers. And so I started giving him decaffeinated coffee. Don't tell him I told you that in the mornings. These letter grades are a big deal, because it's demoralizing. And then when you get an A, they still mess with you. You see what I'm getting at? I mean, they give you an A, like in Bossier Parish, they have Bossier, Webster, Clayburn, all different parishes with different challenges. And they changed some things on Bossier, and Bossier still got an A, and they're scratching their heads, saying, wow, we've got to do some more stuff to them next year. You know? Webster is a wonderful, Mendon in Webster raises more money for St. Jude's per capita than any other city in the nation. Great people in Mendon. And the stress the school board has just on those unfunded mandates and moving the ball, it's just, guys, we have to change it. I think last year, Senator Milkovich put an amendment on House Bill 1 to defund Bessie. And passionate speech, and I voted for him, we had two votes then. But I think a lot of that money that they get should come to y'all. I think, as a conservative Republican, I believe the best government is local government. And y'all, many of y'all are former educators, you're business people, you're donating your time, your talent, your treasure. I care more about what my school board members say about my schools than what somebody 250 miles away says about them. So I appreciate what y'all do, but you know, we're going to keep working on this, and I'm going to work with other senators to see what we can do to fix this. Y'all's opinion means a lot to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Gaddy. Senator Ali, you're on.
Thank you. You know, I'll make an admission, I'm probably the least qualified person in this whole room to answer this question. I've never sat on a school board, I've never sat in education. I walked through the Education Committee a couple of times, because they go on so long. But, you know, from a common sense standpoint, and in my business, that's what I do, I run businesses, I always look for stability. And I understand your need for stability, and the goalposts keep changing. That shouldn't happen. I also understand, in talking to staff, that there are several mechanisms before this can change, and I would urge you to use it. And I don't know the dynamics of the Accountability Commission. I know there's a superintendent's advisory council that both of them have to go through before it even goes to Bessie. And never, and never, ever give up. If there's some, if a rule that comes out, because we do it all the time in natural resources, if there's a rule that comes out that you don't like, if there's a metric that comes out that you don't like, ask your legislator, because they have oversight. The Joint Education Committee, if you think something's so egregious, and it's got all the way through that process, ask your legislator to call a hearing, to where you can again put forth your grievances, and oversight is with those committees that can reverse a rule at any time. So use the tools that you have to the best of you can.
What we really need to pay attention to are the investments in public education. And first and foremost, our priority is ensuring excellence and equity in everything that we do in public education. And fundamentally, that comes down to the investments that we provide. Now, the solutions are not provided in Washington, we all know that. But what we can do is leverage the opportunities that Washington can provide to invest in programs and priorities that we know school boards need to make, in terms of how can we meet student learning needs? How can we invest in teachers? How can we invest in the wraparound services? The different kinds of qualities of assurance that we can give parents through programs and opportunities that we can give kids? So right now, we really need to pay attention to what we're doing in Washington, in terms of how the investments in education, such as Title II, Title IV programs, how that is really made. Because those funding, those funding mechanisms really get down to the local level, and it's about restoring local control. And that's what we need to do and really pay attention to.
Is there a danger that Congress is going to cut funding to those programs?
Yes, there is. Right now, we have some proposals on the table that would cut critical funding. Right now, there's a big budget negotiation going on. We're still working in the current fiscal year to hammer out details. At the same time, we're trying to figure out the next fiscal year. So at this time, we really have to make sure that those, any funding cuts, we stave off any funding cuts for those critical programs, the Title I programs, Title II, Title IV, and certainly IDEA.
Our household believes in the importance of public education.
Our household believes in the importance of public education. The importance of public education. Everybody in this room also believes in that importance. We believe in our schools. We believe in our teachers. And importantly, we believe in our students. The awards that I have the great privilege of handing out today go hand in hand with my mission to support public education and improve the lives of children around Louisiana. In fact, my background as an educator has heavily guided my platform as First Lady. One of the awards today, the Innovation Award, is an aspect of the Louisiana Believes in Public Schools contest. In the past couple of years, I have witnessed how important innovative programs and partnerships with communities can be to enhancing the learning experience. We know how important it is to bring in our communities. We know how important it is to bring other people into our schools to see what we're doing in our classrooms every day. In Louisiana, there are also many barriers, as you well know, to the children fully being able to achieve their goals in the classroom. One of the other awards being handed out today is an art award meant to increase art awareness in Louisiana schools. And this is also a cause that is very near dear in my heart. I was a music teacher and saw firsthand how many benefits of art education is into our students and our schools. As someone who believes in educating the whole child, I have been working to promote Teach Mam, M-A-M. We all love the word "yes, ma'am" in the South. And the word "yes, ma'am" kinda gives us a feeling of respect when we say "yes, ma'am." Not that it doesn't mean "yes, sir," but "yes, ma'am." But Mam, M-A-M, Music, Art Movement in our schools. With the help of Scott and a few others in the audience, we're working very hard. We have our first teacher in a class at school in Webster Parish. We're using them as a pilot program to work out the kinks. But investing in educators in the classroom. We have some wonderful, great, fabulous after-school programs throughout our state. We have people all over the state doing great things, and communities stepping in and doing these after-school programs, and those are fabulous. We also need educators in the classroom. We need music teachers. We need art teachers. We need movement, dance, P.E. We have got to put music, art, and movement back in our schools and educate the whole child. Thank you. And I will give of myself over the next two years, and hopefully the next six, I will give of myself to come to your school. If you're hiring a music art, music teacher, a movement teacher, contact my office. Patty's here. I will come, and I will be there when that teacher walks in the classroom. I will work with your communities to invest in those programs. When your budget is low, there are many people in your community who'd love to donate to your schools and help you to encourage those programs. Our culture in Louisiana, we are to be the bright shining star throughout the country for music, art, and movement in our schools. We know that. We love jazz music. We have the best art in the country coming right out of Louisiana. And we have some amazing athletes. We all know that. We really should be investing in these programs.
The Fund for Restoring Our Schools was able to collect $345,962.27. In that effort, a very special person came to the assistance of LSBA and realized there was a need. And her commitment to public service and helping her fellow man and woman is very obvious to all of us today. And without the help of the First Lady, Ms. Donna Edwards, we would not have been able to even come close to raising these funds. Thank you, Donna, for all your help. She further assisted in linking us up with other folks that you know very well. So I'd ask that, I know you're eating, but that you please stand and recognize the efforts of First Lady Edwards in helping us raise $325,000. You were very instrumental in helping us get connected with Ms. Brittany Spears, who everybody knows. We'd ask that you'd help us in giving her a Friend of Public Education Award as well. Yes, ma'am. Never in a million years would I ever believe that the LSBA, the School Boards Association, would be all over social media with a special event being conducted by Brittany Spears to assist our flood-affected school districts in Louisiana. So it's quite an accomplishment for our association, and it speaks to the credibility of the LSBA and the credibility of you as school board members.
It's an exciting time in public education, and the more we can educate our communities to realize that hand in hand we work, and the stronger communities that we have, the stronger public school system, and through the strong public school system, it builds strong communities. And we merge those two together, the whole community prospers and moves forward.
We have dedicated employees who are committed to educating every kid where they're stationed in life. And I'm very, very excited about the future of public education because we have fantastic employees that's working every day to improve the lives of each child.
Public education in Caddo is strong as it's ever been. My kids are in Caddo schools and getting a great education, and that there is no school in Caddo in which learning is not happening every day.
There are many great things that are happening in public education. We want to be able to, the public, to understand that public education is the greatest thing that we have in the United States. It has a direct impact on housing values in our communities. It has a direct impact on the economics in our community. It has a direct impact on the children and our children's lives. It is what we need in order to build a future for our communities.
We are free education, and even with the mandates that are put before us through our state, we manage to come across with A-plus grades in our state, and that is regarding the districts. And that's, I can go on and on because our community supports us, and it's important to have that relationship with the community.
Without a robust and world-class education system, there is no future for our state. And it is paramount to all stakeholders to support their local school systems and for school board members to be the chief advocates for student achievement in Louisiana.
If people have questions, like more information, what should they do?
They can reach out to the Louisiana School Boards Association at www.lsba.com or give us a call at 225-769-3191.